Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, October 7, 2024. The time is 6:00 P.M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena's City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our minutes from 9:1824 and 9:2324 were received. Commissioners, do we have any additions, comments? Minutes will stand as submitted. Presentation. Presentation of Fire Officers. Fire Chief Campbell, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, the City of Helena Fire Department has recently promoted Captain Owen Kepin, Lieutenant Dylan Dillahun, and Lieutenant John Gustafson. Tonight, we present these promotions. They resulted from the retirements of Captain Jason Rigsby and Lieutenant Casey Dillahun. And with your permission, Mayor, I'd ask you to badge the new officers, please.
That.
Yes, stand.
Confirmation of Fire Inspector Robert Gobel and firefighter Nicola Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission. Fire Inspector Robbie Gobel has completed the requirements of probation, including the passage of fire inspector tests. Firefighter Carey is completing his probationary term also this month. Mr. Mayor, if you allow them to say a few words to the commission, and then we're asking the commission to vote per MCA Section 733-4106 on the confirmation of these probationary employees.
You bet.
Commission, thanks for giving me.
You can raise it up.
Sure. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to work at this place. It's been quite a transition from where I came as a firefighter, but I'm very much enjoying it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to lower it.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I have a couple of thank yous. I'd like to thank my partner Ava, my friends, my families who have supported me through this year, and shift two and the leadership that's brought me through this year. My mentor Dylan brought me all the way through the year side by side, so I appreciate the opportunity and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, if you would please, we're asking for confirmation of these two employees, and pending the outcome of that decision, we'll do the oath of office.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the Fire Department Staff Recommendation. Excuse me, the Fire Department Staff recommend the confirmation of Fire Inspector Gobel and firefighter Carey.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think before we vote, just want to have a brief thank you and congratulations. We're so excited that you've chosen to make the City of Helena your home in terms of employment and grateful for everything you do for our community.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
Just want to say thank you very much to you, your families, and your friends for your service to this community. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead, Chief.
Echo the comments of my colleagues here. Relative to the fire officers, I got to tell one story. You may not remember it, but when Owen Kepin came on to the Fire Department, he was assigned to the same shift that I was. And, and poor Owen, one of the, one of the laments of a probationary firefighter is that, I haven't seen a fire yet. And, and we would pull up to a, a call at an address, and it would be a little barbecue, and it would maybe have gotten beyond the control of its owners, and we'd put it out. And, and I suppose about nine months, maybe a year into his time, we're, we got a call for propane. I think it was an explosion. I can't remember the exact area of town. Owen might be able to remember it, but Owen was facing forward in the back of the engine. I was facing to the rear. And in Owen's face, as I'm, as we're headed to this call, it just lit up because of the propane explosion. And I just remember saying, Owen, there's your fire. And it was, it was an all-nighter. So, but anyway, congratulations to you all. As I've always said, it's a marvelous ride, and, and thank you for your willingness to be here and willingness to serve in the various capacities that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Just briefly, thank you. Thank you for your service and come to the department.
I'm not going to waste any more thank yous, you know, so we just get to it. I know that's what you're waiting for, right? So it's been moved, seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
All right. They're still not there yet. They still need to take their oath, you know, so let's do this. You'll call your names. When I say aye, both of you will call your names. Let me see if they're two different, fire inspector and firefighter, and then you will call your positions, okay? Oath of office. Aye.
Robert Gobel. Nicola Carey.
Recognize my obligation as a member of the Fire Prevention Bureau.
Fire Inspector.
No.
Repeat after me. Oh, Fire Prevention Bureau.
Let's do this again. Aye.
Robert Gobel. And Nicola Carey.
Recognize my obligation as a member of the Fire Prevention Bureau.
Recognize my obligation as a member of the Fire Prevention Bureau.
For the City of Helena.
For the City of Helena.
You too.
For the City of Helena.
To protect and preserve life.
Protect and preserve life.
And property for the public I serve.
Property for the public I serve.
And I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution. Of the State of Montana.
State of Montana.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of. Fire and Prevention Bureau. The Helena Fire Department.
For the City of Helena.
For the City of Helena.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Congratulations. Now we can do that clapping. Come on, guys. Yeah, sure. Proclamations. Fire Prevention Week. Which one is it? City of Helena proclamation. Whereas the City of Helena is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fire caused 2,700 civilian deaths in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. Whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happened in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported fire, home fires in half. Whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in event of fire in which you may have a little as two minutes to escape fire, escape safety. Whereas the City of Helena residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas the City of Helena, a resident will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all the family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Helena residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Helena first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fires injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Helena's residents are responsive to public education measures and can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms, Make Them Work For You, serves to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarm in the home. Now therefore, be it resolved that I will, MacCollins, Mayor of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim October 6 through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Helena to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Helena Fire and Emergency Services. In witness whereof, I hereunto set the hand of the cause and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this seventh day of October, 2024. Will MacCollins, Mayor, Danae Claiborne, Clerk of the Commission. Chief, would you come to receive this? I'm assuming you are receiving it, right? Okay. Okay, we have another proclamation. Pet Spay Neuter Day proclamation, City of Helena proclamation. The City of Helena values the health and well-being of all animals within our community, and responsible pet ownership is a shared civic responsibility. And whereas the Helena area Friends of Pets since 2004 has been a dedicated advocate for animal welfare, providing over 8,000 affordable spay and neuter services to prevent overpopulation, reduce homelessness, and improve the quality of life for pets and their families. And whereas the efforts of the Helena area Pets, Friends of Pets have led to a decrease in number of unwanted and abandoned animals, thereby reducing the strain on local shelter and rescue organization and contributing to a more compassionate and humane community. And whereas the Helena area Friends of Pet have collaborated with local veterinarians, volunteers, civic leaders to educate the public about the importance of spaying and neutering, preventing needless euthanasia, and promoting the health benefits of these procedures for pets. And whereas in recognition of the Helena area Friends of Pets, two decades of service to our city and its positive impact on animal welfare, it is fitting that we honor their dedication and reaffirm our commitment to a community where all pets are loved, cared for, and responsibly managed. Now therefore be it resolved that I will, MacCollins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim October 7 as Pet Spay Neuter Day. Throughout this city, and I encourage all citizens to support the mission of the Helena area Friends of Pet in promoting responsible pet ownership and ensuring the well-being of all of our animal companions for years to come. In witness whereof, I hereunto set the hand and cause the seal, the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this seventh day of October, 2024. Will MacCollins, Mayor, Danae Claiborne, Clerk of the Commission, who is here to receive this, Mary Gagan Huber? Gagan Huber, please. Want to say a few words? Please.
As I said, my name is Mary Gagan Huber. I am the president of Helena area Friends of Pets, or we call ourselves HAFOP. And I wanted to thank you for this proclamation, Mayor and the Commissioner. Helena area Friends of Pets, like you said, have helped spay and neuter 8,000 animals in the last 20, 20, 20 years, yes, two decades. And we also, at the same time, can, for those people that need vaccinations for their animals, about approximately 73% of these animals were also vaccinated through HAFOP. So that helps get, you know, the rabies and all the shots that they need so they don't just cause other diseases. And since the pandemic, as you know, everything has gone up in price. And the veterinary services have really increased this like everybody else. And the need for nonprofit organizations to get grants is insanely competitive. And so since the pandemic, the cost of spaying and neutering has almost quadrupled. And a lot of more people cannot afford veterinary, veterinary services for their furry family members. And, because my cats are my kids, because I never had kids, so, so our need is even greater. So this proclamation, we really appreciate for the fact that now we have to depend mostly on donations, and this will help to get the word out that we are still here. And we are still trying to make Helena a better place for our animals. And so I want to thank you again, and I want to thank, this is Lisa, Bob, Mary Ann, and Noel. We are an all voluntary group of seven people, and that's all we have to do what we do. And so I want to thank them for their trust and their faith in me that, as their president, because nobody else wanted the job, that we will be able to continue this for the next 20 years. So thank you again, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, we continue our agenda. We have claims, no presentation required. Action to be considered for the commission. Claims paid on 9/324, 9/424, and 9/624. Checks number 201743 through 201806, and numbers 45453 through 454. For a total of $222,992.08. Claims paid on 9/924, 9/1224. Checks number 201807 through 201887. And numbers 455 through 456, for a total of $996,966,225.86. Claims paid on 9/1724, 9/1924, and 9/2024. Checks number 201888 through 202020. Number 457, for an amount of $544,766.28. Claims paid on 9/2424, 9/2724. Checks number 202021 through 202057. Number 458 through 460, for an amount of $1,886,872.44. For a grand total of $3,620.85856.66. Any discussion? And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioners.
I will move to approve the consent agenda item A claims.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to take public comment?
Do you have any members of the public wishes to make any comments on this item? Do you have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Missions. Proposals. Moving along. Reporter of the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Reporter of the City Manager.
Mayor, the City of Helena was notified that we were awarded the MMIAs, Bob Worthington Risk Management Achievement Award this year. And with your permission, I'd like to invite Director McManus to explain what.
Please.
entails.
You have the floor, Director McMahon.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So as the City Manager said, at the Montana National League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference last week in West Yellowstone, we were surprised and awarded this highest achievement that MMIA honors among all cities and towns for efforts to mitigate risk and liability. I am honored to receive this award on behalf of the city, and it motivates us even more to continue this momentum. Couple of noteworthy efforts. We had many departments involved and participating and contributing to this award, to include the Fire Department, Transit, Public Works, and Police. We implemented management tools and techniques. We had some training. We had defensive driver courses. We had resilience training. MMIA offers risk assessments and evaluations to proactively mitigate risk and liability for the city. So we're really honored to be recognized for these efforts. And this is a group award. It's not an individual award. So without leadership support, supervisor's support, engagement of our employees in these activities and efforts, we would not have been able to succeed in the efforts that we've put forward. I'm happy that MMIA was, you know, we were lucky enough for them to recognize those efforts with all the support collectively. So thank you.
Thank you, Director McMahon. Manager Burton.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
I think we should be given a, a hand, you know? That's an award that we got. Okay, communications from Helena Citizens Council.
My name is Anna Kratz. I represent District Six. I am delighted to say we had a successful open house for Helena Forward on September 25th. There were at least 75 attendees. We hope we provided the city planning department with more information about what the Helena citizens want, what they appreciate, and what they see as the future of Helena. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Did you have a comment for?
No, I was about to send it over to the Commissioners. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to HCC for organizing that. I went down there and saw at least several other Commissioners at the same time. It was a great event, great energy. It was a really nice opportunity to talk to both our own district representatives and meet some of the other ones, so I appreciate the effort. It was a cool event, and I look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Any others? Thank you. Whoa, this is the best part of the meeting. Are there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission?
I'm Lucas Wallace. I'm a Helena citizen. Figured it would be a short meeting today. Mr. Mayor, the statistics I have say that there were around 3,800 fire-related deaths in 2022 in the United States. That's compared to around 7,500 pedestrian deaths from traffic accidents. So you're just more than twice as likely to be run down trying to cross the street and die from that as you are to be killed in a fire. So, you know, I certainly understand the need for Fire Safety Week, but I don't understand why we don't have a Traffic Safety Week. That doesn't even consider just traffic fatalities in general, which is something in the range of 40,000 people plus per year, or injuries, which is something like 60,000 pedestrian injuries, which compares to something like 13,000 fire-related injuries for civilians injured in fires. As somebody who has. As somebody who has personally experienced or had the misfortune to experience a house fire, I certainly appreciate what the Fire Department does, and I've seen how fast it can take off. And I agree with that preventing fires, if you can do so, is a huge thing. And I think they do a great job here. But I think that, you know, that shows what you can do if you don't accept that, you know, deaths from fires are just something that we just have to live with and that there's nothing that we can do about them. Unfortunately, it seems like with respect to our streets, we just think that there's nothing that we can do about the deaths that happen on our streets, which are a larger problem. The Fire Department unfortunately has a fire truck that's too big to go around the corners. And so we have to widen the streets so that the fire truck can get there faster. But most of the emergencies that they're responding to are not fires, they're traffic accidents. And widening the streets just makes that problem worse. So respectfully, I only hope to suggest that we should treat the slow-motion emergency of traffic deaths, pedestrian deaths, with the same amount of seriousness that we, the same seriousness that we treat preventing fire-related deaths. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And I will say that I believe we treat all deaths as serious death because it's not fun or anything. So I guess maybe we can start Traffic Week, huh? If that's what you're looking forward to, come, let's talk about it, and we'll make it happen. Do you have any other public comments? Any other person who wants to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any others, Commissioners? Okay, nothing else? This meeting is formally adjourned.